Republicans. What did that look like?
So mainstream Republicans in the wake of the Alabama ruling have really circled the wagons to try to show that they are not only totally comfortable with IVF, but are going to go to great lengths to preserve it. And they see it as pro-family. They know that's how most of their constituents view it. They want to really show that they see that as totally separate from the conversation about abortion and that they are going to be the ones to preserve access to IVF. And so on the very same day this happened in Indianapolis, in Washington, Senator Katie Britt of Alabama, she's an evangelical Christian, she gets up on the floor of the Senate and gives this impassioned speech supporting IVF.
I was proud to join my colleague from Texas and introducing the IVF Protection Act.
She, with Senator Ted Cruz of Texas, has put forward this bill that they say is intended to protect IVF access by blocking Medicaid funding to states that ban it outright. Democrats say that actually would not have done anything to fix the problem, and there are these kind of jockeying bills. But still, she gets up on the Senate floor.
Okay, as a mom, I know firsthand that there's no greater joy in this life than that of being a mother. IVF helps aspiring parents.
And speaks, you know, as a mom, as she puts it, in defense of IVF.
IVF access is fundamentally pro-family.
She's wearing this really prominent cross necklace and, you know, she talks about how supporting IVF is pro-family, that that's the pro-family point of view.
We all have loved ones, whether they're family members or friends who have become parents or grandparents through IVF.
And she puts out a statement the same day with Senator Cruz, and it's signed by all of her Republican colleagues, including Josh Hawley, Marsha Blackburn, you know, every conservative across the spectrum in the Senate signs onto this support for IVF.
So even the most conservative Republicans in Congress are coming out with this position that's really at odds with evangelicals.
That's right. IVF is hugely popular. Fertility treatments are widely used, you know, including by evangelicals. Most people don't even think negatively about this stuff, let alone want to ban it. So it's a real dilemma for Republicans to watch evangelicals potentially turn in this direction.
So there's pressure from the Southern Baptist Convention on mainstream Republicans, which I have to imagine is making Democrats pretty happy. I mean, I saw President Biden out there with a fundraising email the day that the Southern Baptists voted.
That's right. I mean, Democrats are really leaning into reproductive rights right now. They're putting abortion measures on ballots in November. They know that's going to attract their voters, it's going to attract independents. And the vote last week from the Southern Baptists is another suggestion that there's this movement out there that doesn't just want to regulate at 15 weeks, not just at 12 weeks, not just at six weeks, but, you know, all the way down to the embryo in the lab. So I think Democrats see an opportunity here to exploit this growing divide between evangelicals and Republicans, at least on this issue.
And this is all going to be all the more salient ahead of a very important presidential election.
Yeah, that's exactly right. The Republican Party and American evangelicals have been in lockstep, really, since the 1970s. And, you know, now for Republicans, there's this question about whether or not it's still politically advantageous for them to follow where the anti-abortion movement is going on this stuff, because they're pushing into places that are really deeply unpopular among the American population overall. And, you know, the anti-abortion movement itself at this point is pretty divided on where it's going to go next. So, you know, we saw the Supreme Court last week on Thursday, you know, they maintained access to the abortion pill, you know, there were divisions even within the anti-abortion movement over whether or not to bring that case forward. Some within that movement were skeptical of it. So you're seeing sort of confusion and disagreement even internally on where to go after the overturning of Roe v. Wade.
Ruth, what about the broader population of evangelical Christians? Where are they on this?
I think that's still a really open question at this point. You know, I talked to this young pastor from Georgia at the meeting who was saying, you know, I don't want to go back to the people in my church and tell them that the creation of their children and grandchildren comes from these immoral means, and the language of the resolution was careful around that, but it's still going to be really hard to get that across and to just translate it for the people in the pews. At the same time, you know, talking with Andrew Walker about this, who co-wrote the resolution, when he has one-on-one conversations with people about the topic and sort of walks them through basically the logic of the resolution, you know, he said almost everyone comes away from those conversations with, at the very least, a sort of skepticism and, you know, a level of critical thinking around fertility treatments that they didn't come in with. And that suggests that there's at least sort of an openness to thinking differently about fertility treatments. And, you know, the reason all this matters is obviously evangelicals are this hugely influential voting bloc. They're used to having the power to turn their theological beliefs into policy. And when they come together, you get this political force, you know, the same political force that worked for decades over a lot of obstacles and was eventually successful in overturning Roe v. Wade. Now, IVF is different than abortion. IVF is extremely popular, including at this point among evangelical Christians. But if we find out that evangelicals are persuadable on IVF, you know, it doesn't just have implications for their personal spiritual lives. If this is the beginning of a moral awakening on IVF, and that's a big if, that would have real implications for the rest of the country.
Ruth, thank you.
Thank you.
Ruth Graham is a religion reporter for The New York Times.
The Daily is supported by BetterHelp, committed to supporting mental health through therapy. Clients are matched with one of 35,000 therapists and can communicate via video chat or phone at betterhelp.com-public. And by Total Wine &amp; More, helping shoppers love what they find at totalwine.com. Spirits not sold in Virginia or North Carolina. Drink responsibly, B21. Get the story firsthand with The Daily from The New York Times, distributed by American Public Media.
The Daily is powered by the journalism of The New York Times and is distributed by APM, American Public Media. You can go deeper into the stories you hear on The Daily by going to nytimes.com/thedaily. That's it for The Daily. I'm Sabrina Tavareesi. See you tomorrow.
This week on This American Life, we return to Yusef in Gaza. Since the beginning of the war, he's been the one in his family who's decided this is where we're going next. This is where we're going to stay. This is when we have to go, until he arrived in Rafa, where Yusef hit a wall and could not make a decision. What happened to Yusef and his family is an Israeli invasion of Rafa got closer and closer and then arrived this week.
The 7:00 PM session of Roanoke City Council is hereby called to order, and I'll ask our clerk, Mr. Williams, to please call a row.
Ms. Sanchez Jones, Mr. Pretty, Vice Mayor Cobb.
Here.
Ms. Whiteboy.
Here.
Mr. Rollison.
Here.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Here.
And Mayor Lee.
Here, and a quorum is present. I will be delivering the invocation tonight, and I'll also be leading this in the Pledge of Allegiance. So we're doing a doubleheader tonight. But before we get started, I'd ask you if you would join us in a moment of silence in memory of Dan Conns, who passed away on June 7, 2024. Dan was served as a city representative on the Roanoke Redevelopment Housing Authority. He's also a member of the Board of Commissioners and the Blue Ridge Behavioral Healthcare Board of Directors. And Dan was also a veteran of the armed services. Join us in a moment of silence, please. Thank you. Eternal God, our Father, we come to you at this time, first of all, thanking you for this day that you've given us. We thank you for your many blessings that you bestowed upon us. And we ask you now as to guide and direct us as elected and appointed officials to do the business of this city. And Lord, we ask you now to bless those who are going through difficulties in our city and let them know that you're still able to change things and you're still a God that sits high and looks low. And Lord, we thank you for all the many blessings that you bestowed upon us here in our city. We give you praise, we give you honor and glory, in the high and holy name of your Son, we pray. Amen.
Amen, Dan.
None allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Councilman Baltimore, please make a motion to bring us out of closed session.
I move with respect to any closed meeting just concluded that each member of city council in attendance certified to the best of his or her knowledge that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and only such public business matters as were identified in any motion by which any closed meeting was convened or heard, discussed, or considered by the members of council in attendance.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. My clerk, please call a row.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Aye.
Ms. Whiteboy.
Aye.
Mr. Rollison.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye.
And thank you. All right, the first item is presentation and acknowledgements. We have none, and so we were scheduled to have two public hearings tonight. One, item number one, is a request of the Boon Real Estate Incorporated to close by vacation an approximate 0.05 acre portion of midpoint circle southwest. The planning commission continued this matter until Monday, June 10, 2024, at 1:30 PM here in the council chamber. The matter was continued again until Monday, July 8, 2024. Therefore, city council really does not have any jurisdiction to hear this matter at the present time. All right, item number two is a request of the South Creek Development LLC to rezone property located at 3731 and 3715 Chandler Avenue Northwest. Well, this matter was withdrawn at the June 10, 2024 meeting, city planning commission meeting. Therefore, city council does not have any jurisdiction to hear over this matter, and so that will be heard at a later date. Item number two is the hearing of citizens upon public matters. Now, city council sets this time aside as a priority for citizens to be heard. If deemed appropriate, matters will be referred to the city manager for response, recommendation, or report to city council. And I'm going to ask our clerk now if we have any people that signed up to speak tonight.
Yes, we have five speakers.
All right, could you call them in the order that they signed up?
Yes. Shanice Rivera.
My name is Shanice Rivera, and my address, right? No?
Say again.
No, I was asking if I had to give my address.
Oh, no, you're fine, you're fine, your name, we got it, we have.
This is my first city council meeting, and I'm just trying to get familiar with being in here because I do care about the city. I did prepare something to read to you guys, so I'm just going to do that. I'm kind of nervous too, so.
You're fine.
It's very.
No worries.
Thank you.
You're at home. Yeah, we're family.
Okay, so, okay, so since 1981, my family has been affected by the gun violence in this very city here of Roanoke, Virginia. I lost a large number of friends and family due to gun violence. My son is now affected by it. He will now grow up without a father amongst many other children in this very city here of Roanoke, Virginia. But I don't bring this up to stir up doom and gloom, but to stir up a zeal or more of a zeal for the youth in this community. It is still hope, and that hope is giving the youth ages, as young as eight to 18, something tangible, consistent, and meaningful that they can relate to and benefit from as well as the city. I am mostly born, I mean, I am born here and mostly raised here in Roanoke, Virginia. I've learned so many lessons here, some that I should have never been presented, and also some that I'm grateful for so that I can be a part of this solution. I know there are programs about the violence in this city, and I know that you all are very familiar with what's going on. However, in my 32 years of being here, I have yet to see much change with, like, the local programs. With as much potential as Roanoke has, I would hate for the violence and lack of attention to the youth to tear travelers and people who want to settle here or settle somewhere less fast-paced and dangerous. We don't, we don't, we don't want Roanoke overlooked. It's a beautiful place to live, it's a beautiful place. Now, to give a little more background, as I stated before, I'm from here and have seen the good, the bad, and the ugly, and I still want to create change here. However, it is hard with my experience with most of the programs because they're proactive, they're not proactive, and they're honestly misleading in their process. Many others and myself that look to create change feel like just another number in those programs, just to keep those grants rolling, and with very little help to, for real efforts and real change. With that being said, I do appreciate the people who do actually care and remain staying involved. Lastly, I wouldn't come here today if I hadn't put in the work to contribute towards the positive change that will occur in this city. And in the proper setting, I'm willing to present my contribution and, oh, is that timed?
Go ahead and finish your statement.
I'm willing to present my contribution and ideas, and thank you all for your time and efforts, and one way or another, Roanoke will be put on the map for great things. So my question today is just to be pointed in the right direction of who I could talk to, start with that.
To present your, your ideas or whatever. To the city manager?
Yeah. Go ahead. Yeah, I was also going to suggest that tomorrow night is our monthly Gun Violence Prevention Commission meeting.
Okay.
Stephanie, do you recall which library?
We're going to be at Melrose.
Okay.
Melrose Library, yes.
Okay, what time?
5:30.
Okay.
And I think we'll be in the community room, which is kind of in the middle of the.
Okay, I know what you're going on.
Melrose is at, Melrose.
I know where it's at.
Okay. We'll see you there.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for coming down, we appreciate hearing from you. Mr. Mayor, our city manager.
Yes.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of city council, we, I have noted Mrs. Rivera's name and number, and as we had this earlier today, the program for junior high school students, I'll have staff to follow up so that she can get information on the plethora of programs that are ongoing and some that she would may like to volunteer to be a part of.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, you guys, happy Monday.
Happy Monday.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of city council. My name is Brandy Campbell, and I'd like to honor my brother's life tonight in honor of Gun Violence Awareness Month. I'd like to share about my grief as it relates to gun violence. It has been seven years and two days since my youngest brother Nicholas was shot and murdered on June 15, 2017. He was murdered just two weeks after graduating from Patrick Henry High School and just one week shy of his 18th birthday. Most of you have heard our story, either from one-on-one conversations, or when I shared our story with you last year, or from newspaper articles, or you may recognize his face as he's one of the faces on the empathy project in the lobby downstairs. He is loved and will forever be missed. My agenda tonight is to simply leave you with a reminder that grief is hard, that it's a process. The grief of a murdered loved one is a specific hardship, one that I wish no one had to endure. As we work as a community to facilitate change, I hope you are able to feel the collective loss of our loved ones, of our youth. It's not enough for you just to hear our stories, I hope you can feel our pain and put that pain into action, and then that action will invoke change. It has become my personal mission to share our story of love and loss as many times as I can to keep the conversation going, to be a light in this dark world, to share that gun violence grief is unimaginably hard, especially when it continues to happen. When I first began this grief journey, the grief groups I found were under the hospice umbrella through Carillion. All the types of loss were in one group. But now, seven years later, there are specialized grief groups. Carillion has a parent loss grief group, a homicide loss group, and I'm proud to help with the recently formed sibling loss group. I also attend the gun violence loss grief group with the nonprofit group that you're well aware of, with the ladies at Fed Up. The grief groups are a safe place to express my pain and to glean support from the other members as we hold space for one another to process our loss. It's within those groups that the pain is collective and palpable. It's within those groups that a grief community is being built. Seven years later, and I still need grief support. Seven years later, and my heart is still broken. My family is still broken, and I'm not the only one. My family is not alone in our loss. When I left the Fed Up Prayer Breakfast last Saturday, where 23 lives lost in the last year were honored, I went around the corner to the apartment building where my brother was killed. And just the same as last year, the bullet holes are still on the side of the building. The bullet holes remain in the side of the apartment building, the silver tape is still covering the bullet holes on the vertical blinds in the apartment where a couple lay sleeping in their beds as shots were fired at my brother outside. Seven years later, there is a visible, tangible reminder of the night that my brother was murdered. Please, as we continue as a community to strive for change, don't forget the lives that have been lost. Don't forget the families that are still in pain, still broken. Please take the time to get to know us as families, sit with us in our grief. Don't forget the grief that the families endure, as grief is love with no place to go. The grief is always close at heart, it becomes part of our daily lives. We do move forward, but we do so with bullet holes through our hearts. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, and sorry for your loss.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Victor Banks.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I'm, I have concerns about what's been going on with Melrose Athletic Club and Champs Gym over the last two years since, since I appeared on December the 5th, 2022. Mayor Lee asked me to dialogue with the then-city manager, and there never was a dialogue, there was only, you know, one side of this, but I'm not going to be here to talk about that. I have the list of questions here, which I made copies of for all of council, but I'd just like to, to tell you a little bit about Melrose Athletic Club and Champs Gym. I founded the nonprofit Melrose Athletic Club back in 2003 to support Champs Gym, which has now been in the Roanoke community for over 50 years. It was founded in '72. And over the past year, we've, we've continued to train athletes and non-athletes to learn the sport of boxing. And just this year, we've had a Golden Gloves runner-up, and we've had two 14-year-olds that have won the state Junior Olympic Championship for Virginia. And, and they're also qualified for nationals in Wichita, Kansas. So we're representing Roanoke on the state and national level. And I just come to council to let you know that we're still doing work in the community. And for the last 20 years, we've been, we've had a holistic approach to combating gun violence and other issues in the community. And I think it's ironic that what's good at Roanoke has adopted our same principle that we've been practicing for the last 20 years. And I was just letting council know and the interim city manager that I am still open to dialogue, and I believe dialogue goes two ways, not just one way. And that's all I got to say.
Let me ask, Special, where are we on this?
Case is currently on appeal from legal standpoint, but as I understand, there is room for discussion with the interim city manager.
Okay. All right. Okay, thank you. You have met our interim city manager.
Yes. Turned off my phone this time. My name is Alton Aiken. I had planned on speaking in one direction, but I heard that they hired the intermediate city manager from Portsmouth, so I spent about four hours studying all the city council meetings they had. Paxton is your name. Every problem that you had in Portsmouth, you're going to have here too. You know, you know that, you don't have to respond. They've tried, they've moved a chief of police, they've, but anyway, every, everything that you faced there, from the day they, they wanted to fire you until they, it's going to be here too. So. The Lord wouldn't let me speak last city council meeting. He silenced me. I couldn't speak very much. Then when Bob Calwell stood up and resigned, I saw that the Lord was taking care of it. I saw, I saw Brent Robertson, balance our, as Assistant City Manager, balance our budget 2022. He got praised by the clerk over there. He shouldn't have been balancing budgets. I just found out this week that he's going to be handling some of the financial situation of Roanoke. He don't need to be handling any financial situation. He's Assistant City Manager under the city manager. He doesn't need to be doing that. He already made a mistake. He already made a mistake. It's a conflict of interest, conflict. It was a conflict of interest, and he shouldn't have balanced the budget. Y'all listen to him as the paper, my paper that I have says that he was assistant city manager, and he was also the direct financial director. You don't do that. He needs to, he needs to get away from financial situation in this city, or it's just going to make the city even worse. The Lord even shared that he's going to turn everybody against everybody. Everybody's going to go against each other sooner or later, just like this Patton experience with their city councils and everything. You need to, you need to clean the city up. And Mr. Casey Branton, you're next. God's fit to come after that man. He's going to get rid of all these people that have made Roanoke a expensive place.
Mr. Mayor, personal attacks, please.
No, these are not personal attacks. This is my three minutes. It's called freedom of speech.
Okay.
It's called freedom of speech, sir.
Yes, our last speaker is Anthony Peterson.
I didn't come here expecting hearing other people's stories of their loss, and then kind of broke me down because I, I lost someone that was finally come around to the point where she was going to get some help. I just wanted to give my condolences to those who lost people. The problem goes beyond gun violence. It's the type of people we're, we're developing.
All right, Madam Clerk, another speaker. That concludes the hearing of citizens upon public matters. All right. Let me, before we close the meeting, I want to make an announcement with regards to the position, the vacant position for Luke W. Pretty. The council has chosen Beverly "Bev" Fitzpatrick Jr. as a former member of City Council will be serving that position beginning in July, on July, July 1st. All right?
Need to move the resolution?
Move the resolution. Oh, you have?
Yeah, I'll move the resolution.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please read the program.
A resolution appointing Beverly "Bev" Fitzpatrick Jr. as a member of City Council for the city of Roanoke in accordance with Section 4 of the City Charter and Virginia Code, Section 24.2-228, for a term commencing upon qualification and expiring on December 31, 2024.
All right, any discussion among members of council? I hear none. Madam Clerk, please call a row.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Aye.
Ms. Whiteboy.
Aye.
Mr. Vallison.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye. And so Beverly Fitzpatrick Jr. is chosen unanimously, I might add, by this council to assume the position of Councilman Luke Pretty. All right, if there are no further, if there is no further business to come before this council, we'll be declared in recess until tomorrow, June 18, at 1 o'clock PM, when the council will engage in a workshop on event venues, the Jefferson Center and the Burgling Center. And the recess meeting will take place at the Hotel Roanoke and Conference Center located at 110 Shenlo Avenue Northeast, Washington, Lecture Room. All right? Thank you. We'll be in the.